All right, now this is a meeting of the Newbury Town Library Board of Trustees. And we're meeting virtually in accordance with the most recent executive order from the governor, which I think is in effect until July 50th, so that we're able to meet virtually for this period of time. So with that being said, I'm gonna go forward and conduct our business. All right, minutes, you got copies of the minutes that Dick sent out? Is there any comments, questions, corrections, modifications? Done? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes as submitted? Okay, okay, everybody has moved it, the director's report, Jane.
Um, do you want me to read it? A lot of it is outdated.
Okay, well, whatever, you know, whatever's pertinent to our current status.
Okay.
You can do an outline, a quick version.
Yeah, okay, I'll go through and I'll update what's outdated, how's that sound?
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, so we do, I guess, have a date for the demolition, which is May 9th. Erin can really speak to this more than I can, seeing as I'm not going to be here. But Erin, why don't you elaborate on where things standing, especially in terms of packing up and all that?
I don't have an update. I believe that James has been on vacation, so I don't... We're waiting for boxes and things to get delivered to us so that we can kind of start packing up. They did send somebody from Servpro who helped the friends pack up the books in the friends' room, the book sale room, so that's all set. But as far as offices and tech services, there's still kind of a lot of work to do. So I imagine that's what's gonna happen next week.
Yeah, including getting the pods in place and moving the furniture, that's gonna be quite an undertaking.
Yeah, and I think that that's falling on Servpro, right? Not on the staff.
It's a combination of Servpro and staff and possibly some help from the DPW, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure, do you know who's getting the pods in there? If it's Servpro or the DPW, I don't know.
I would imagine it would be Servpro. Oh, that would be my guess anyway. And so that would be, even though they're saying that's when it's gonna start, my sense is initial, probably the first week is gonna be just clearing things out, prepping the whole area for work itself and actually putting up any barriers that have to go up before they actually start the...
That's a good point, probably when they say May 9th as a start date, maybe that means that's when they come and start.
That's when they're gonna come and start, they're not gonna start tearing things apart. No, I mean, because they really can't, I mean, they need, excuse me, they need to clear the area out.
Right.
And they need to put up the barriers to segregate that construction area from the rest of the work.
Plus, the next day is election day.
All right. And actually, if they're coordinating with the town, they may actually, I don't know if the town will have them delay and not work on the Tuesday and have them come back on the Wednesday. So they may, they just start getting organized on the Monday, at least that's what I would do, I wouldn't have them in there. Well, if they're just doing boxing, okay, not a problem, I think that would not interfere with the election.
Well, their plan is to not use our front doors.
So they're just gonna go through the side.
Right, but still parking will be an issue on election day.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, I mean, this is a town election.
Right.
And typically, in both precincts, rarely crests 2,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it still keeps that parking lot pretty full most of the day.
Okay.
Good, good.
Okay, so I think they'll coordinate that, you know, I think James and the town will coordinate that. But I think if they're starting on the Monday, I think they're gonna be packing for a few days, moving furniture out, which I guess they're gonna be taking it out through the side door and into pods, which I'm assuming would be located close by the side door. They're not gonna interfere with the election at all. Okay, so that, at least if the moment gets going, at least the momentum carries forward. Okay, all right.
Okay, so I heard from Essex County exterminators, he just called me out of the blue one day, and he stopped by to inspect the traps they put up last year, and he told me that he found rat droppings. So I know rats are everywhere, I guess, now. So he said that he would be back in a couple of weeks to see where things stand.
Did he put out more traps?
No.
Nothing?
No. He just, he wanted, he wanted to be sure that somehow they hadn't gotten covered up over the winter.
Oh, okay. And I guess even with anything like this, it'd be conscious of any food products that you keep in the building. That's the attraction, they are food-driven.
Yeah.
So now, hey, you can secure it, keep it in the refrigerator, obviously, or closed containers or something like that.
Yeah.
I see what he says when he comes back.
Yep. Programs adults, Erin has started in with booking programs for the next couple of months and beyond. Erin, I don't know if you want to speak to any of that?
Sure, we had our gardening program, which was awesome. She was fantastic, I think she ran an hour long and nobody minded because she had so much good information.
She was a wealth of information and enthusiastic, let me tell you.
Yeah, really fascinating woman in her own right, as well as the content that she had to deliver. So we had about 15 people in attendance for that, and we're already getting signups for the New England Lighthouses and their keepers coming up in May, which is exciting, because I feel like people are coming back now that we're able to do the in-person. And then we have the Friends Annual Plant Sale coming up on May 21st. So that'll be exciting, too. As far as what we're getting into for programs in general, I'm trying to bring the very fun and loved drumming program back for the summer. The writers workshops are coming back in June, and what else did I have? I'm tapped.
Yoga is continuing, I believe, isn't it?
Yep, yoga is going to continue. And, oh, and then we have the new art exhibit that's going in, The Natural Landmarks of Newbury in June, which is going to have an artist reception on the 18th, which will be great.
Is that artist reception, is the 18th is the day of Newbury Day?
I think it might be.
So it'll be part of the whole Newbury Day thing?
Yep.
Okay, good, good stuff.
Yeah.
Katie, I still call her KDD, she's been getting good turnout for Story Times, and she assures me she enjoys doing them, so that's great. Because I keep saying, if you don't like doing them, you know, you don't have it. It's not for everybody. And there are three programs booked for summer, which I've forgotten now, but that Katie had booked before she left, including one as a summer reading kickoff. So at least we've got those in place. Staff, we're sorry to see Katie leave, the friends paid for a pizza lunch send-off on her last day, and we wished her all the best in her new position, and she and her entire family got COVID shortly after. I think it was her second week there.
Yeah.
So they're all getting back on the mend from that. And she had done a great brain dump document for her successor, which I think will be very helpful. KDD is working extra hours and covering children's, we're very lucky to have her on staff, as we are lucky to have Erin, who is doing a stellar job, stellar job of getting organized for the building project, two new hirings, and my departure, I'm sure I'm leaving something out there. She's just, she's been remarkable, and it does make me leaving, my leaving considerably less unsettling to know that the library is going to be in Erin's capable hands. We interviewed an excellent candidate for youth services who has gotten away from us, so that's an update. And we can elaborate on that a little bit more. I won't read the next sentence because that hasn't come to pass. The friends are gearing up for the annual plant sale. Tammy Cotter, Patty Olson, and Linda Rivera are all stepping down from board. They all threw me a little soiree yesterday and brought me some lovely presents, it's so sweet. And they are actively recruiting for new board members, I believe they said they found, they have one.
Oh, great.
Somebody, oh Pam, strong-armed somebody. That's how it gets done. You don't give them any options, you show up, you will be on the board. And I think that's it for the director's report.
Okay, they don't have a new chairperson at this point, do they?
No.
Okay.
Can I add something?
Yeah, sure.
I wanted to call out Emma as well, who's also working a lot of extra hours to help cover the gap and gaps in staffing, and she also offered, as we continue our search for youth services librarian, to work, you know, whatever we need, pretty much, so that we can cobble something together between our two part-timers, and they're just so awesome to offer this. And so we'll have to see what's possible, you know, with Town Hall, if we're able to take her up on that just for the summer, but that would give us some good time to just methodically go through and do the hiring process in the right way.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be great to have two young women down there, I think that'd just, it'd be really fun.
It would, yeah.
Too bad they can't job-share for the future. Who knows?
So she knows, you know, she lives in the community, knows the community. There's almost, it was just, I was so excited when she mentioned this last week, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Obviously, you know, she's connected and feeling comfortable in the environment, so.
Yeah, and everybody, the patrons all love her, they love KDD, too.
Absolutely, well, I mean, the whole staff, I mean, that's, again, it's the culture that you developed and evolved all the time. That's all about, so, yeah, good job.
And it is evolving.
Yeah, it is, it is, we'll continue to do that, too. I mean, we know the challenges of keeping staff, and, you know, that's just kind of the reality of our library, and it's, turns out to be a training ground for some people, and that's okay, too. Hopefully, we can set it up so that we have people staying a little longer than they have been in the past. But I think your base is real good right now, and based on the way that the budget went last night, I think, yeah, we're in good shape going forward.
Yep. For sure.
Excellent, all right, budget.
So I sent out the final updated, it's really only partially updated because we're still working with the town's numbers from March 31st, because the April months won't come out till May 5th, 6th, or 7th. But I wanted to get everything updated there and to try and make it a little clearer with the funds, and Erin is meeting with the assistant accountant tomorrow to get things even clearer with the funds in terms of how much is spendable, all of that, because even though we cleared through a lot of muck a couple of years ago when we sorted them out, the way that they're providing us the information is still very confusing. So it should be even clearer after tomorrow, but for now, if we start with municipals, the municipal funding, at 75% of the year, we're exactly 75% spent for wages and salaries. We're at 94% for library materials, but that's just from the municipal budget. We've still got about another 12,000 or so to spend from the funds. And for total library expenses, we've spent 87% of our budget.
Can I add one thing on that?
Yeah.
Because I think where, so the 54,000 is part of the 93,000, right?
Yes.
So that doesn't all tally up to 311?
311, where are you?
Total municipal budget.
What tallies up to 311 is just wages and salary and library expenses. I just put the materials in there.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so the total municipal budget that we manage is at 72%. Building maintenance that James Saret manages is at 66%, so our total budget for the state, which is our wages and expenses plus building maintenance, we're at 61% spent with three months to go in the year, give or take. For state aid, total budgeted for wages and salaries, hopefully that's not going to be a light item for us next year, which is a huge relief, but I realize there's all kinds of things on the table. But we're at 60, we've spent 66% of what we had budgeted for wages and salaries, and that's primarily because of the increases for circulation head and youth services. We still have to spend from state aid for wage it for materials and for some other budgeted expenses. The balance right now is 34,240. For gift and donations, we have $10,705 left in there. We've spent a little bit for budgeted expenses, but we haven't touched it yet for materials, but that's what Erin will be doing for the next three months, because we're close to spent out in municipal funds.
Okay.
The Arthur Johnson, we paid for, oh, what was it, Erin, that we paid for, was it hoopla? Oh, the news stream, US news stream, we funded from Arthur Johnson. So we pretty much cleaned that out for the year, we're at 98%. And again, this balance in there, well, hopefully, all of that will be clearer after tomorrow, but for right now, what I've got is 3,231. What we're not clear on is what is spendable and what is the balance in the fund? That's, those are the numbers that I don't get, so there has to be some clarification on all that. For Hatch Week's books, we spent like crazy, because that was when I was out on bereavement, so we spent 197% from that fund, but I don't think that's going to be a problem. We just, it shouldn't be a big deal. Hatch Week's AV, which is media materials, videos, and DVDs, we have not spent from at all, and you see the balance there in orange. Randall Fund, I really need to get clear, for some reason, when they give me numbers for Randall Fund, it's always around 17,000, but I don't think that's what's spendable, but I haven't been able to parse out what is spendable, so hopefully Erin will get a handle on that tomorrow. We have spent a little bit from the Randall Fund, so we're at 37% for that fund. Catherine Brown is, that's what's listed as spendable, all of it strictly for the building, so that's restricted. Lois Smith is restricted, 26,191, and I do have an update on that. And of course, the Nade donation at 75,000, now they put that 75,000 in gift and donations unrestricted. And as far, Erin, you can elaborate on your conversation with whoever it was, but it sounds like it's just going to be included in gift and donations. In other words, it's not going to be a separate account number or anything, because it is unrestricted. You know, Erin might want to track what you're spending from the 75, just for your purposes, but fundamentally, it bumped up our balance in gift and donation by 75,000.
Yep.
And so I, over at the side there, I totaled, the 54,671 is our total restricted amount. That's what we've got in funds that are restricted, and about 119, really about 120,000 are unrestricted, give or take.
Okay, and the bulk of that is the 75,000?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And it says on the sheet, Jane, that the Lois Smith is unrestricted, but in reality, that is restricted, though.
No, it's actually, the restricted is above Lois Smith.
Oh, okay, yep, all right.
The unrestricted is for the 75,000.
All right, I got you, I got you.
So this is probably the last...
It came out on two pages.
Oh. Oh. I tried so hard to not have that. Did that happen for everybody else? I tried so hard to avoid that happening.
Well, Alex knows what he's doing, so it didn't happen.
No, different printer, different program.
Different printer, yeah, exactly.
Well, this will maybe be the last time you'll be seeing this spreadsheet, because Erin's whipping up her own. And I have worked on this one.
More confusion awaits.
I'm sure hers will be fine. You got a better issue, you know, it's, as I said to her, everybody doesn't understand everybody else's spreadsheet, it's...
Right, absolutely. I don't understand any of them, so it's...
It's when you, when you work with it, and you're in the nitty-gritty and the formulas and everything, it all makes sense to you, but...
Of course.
And maybe accountants do better spreadsheets than librarians, I don't know, but that will probably be the last time you'll see that one.
So I mean, financially, it looks like a very stable position going forward. Do some different and creative things, you know, you've got some flexibility, and the beauty of it is that, you know, with the restricted monies, it's always, it's always a resource that's there. As we talked about, as we were planning for this timeframe, you know, it's lovely to have that money available, so when things come up, you know, you can do them like story walks, you know, and things like that, or putting a new library sign out in front of the building. So I mean, that's good stuff.
I agree.
All right. That's the budget. All right, the agreement for the new director, I think we've had some discussions about that and some various iterations of it, and I think I sent out a final version to everybody. If you had a chance to look at it, that's acceptable in that final version. Somebody want to make a move, if we accept it?
Approval of the...
Terry, second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? I, the three of us approve it, so that's done and over, thank you. And we'll just arrange for me to sign it at some point. Gloves and a plastic bag over me is something. That will get done, try to do that as soon as possible, get all the paperwork, figure out how to do it so that it's safe.
Yeah.
That's the least of our worries, so that's done and over with, congratulations, Erin.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving things forward and, you know, keeping the momentum going. You guys have done a terrific job, and ship afloat and keep it moving, and I think you got the funds to make it all work well going forward, excellent, good time. All right.
So I jumped, Dick, I jumped into the FY22 budget and not the FY23 budget.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, because that's...
No, no, that was my bad.
If I was paying attention, I would have seen, that's exactly what it said. FY23 budget report, okay, all right, so jump into the 23.
I, really not much to report, other than it passed, yay! And it's, it's a beautiful thing, and it provides options, and my head is spinning, as I said earlier, with all the options, but then I tell my head to stop spinning because they don't pertain to me. So I just, I think it's gonna be just fantastic, and I'm just so thrilled. And I know Erin has lots of good ideas, so, and I'm sure you all do as well.
I do, but the first one is to hire. We've got to get up to staff levels.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I've been bringing up with people the senior volunteer tax work-off positions. There are a couple of people with library experience who might be able to be interested.
Great, that's great.
Not that I have anything to do with it, except to try and get them in, you know?
Now, who do they actually have to coordinate with the Town Hall to do that, Terry?
Council on Aging.
Oh, Council on Aging, oh, okay, okay, all right, something to look at, good. People engaged and involved, again, as we talked about in the past, builds more connections into the community and, you know, it's great, that's what it's all about.
Before.
Okay.
In the history room.
Oh.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if she's still gonna do it, but...
Very good, very good. I guess, you know, in essence, the budget as requested got approved, and that's, that's, that's kind of a first for us, isn't it?
As a one of that increase, for sure.
To get us back to where we were in the early 2000s, I mean, that is, that's monumental, and it's, again, it's a credit to everybody just keeping, you know, chugging along and moving forward. And again, and I'll extend thanks and credit to Tracy for working with us over this period of time, you know, with a clear vision that we couldn't do it all one time, even though I know she would have liked to do that, but recognizing that we couldn't, had to do this incrementally, but, and again, working with Eugene and Mary, whatever her name was.
Mary Ritz-Klein?
Yeah, to get, to get a clearer understanding of what the requirements were to meet the state aid requirements. So I think it's, you know, teamwork makes things happen, so, thank you.
Yeah, and just a heads up, by my calculations, you won't make the Marth in FY23, because it's the, they calculate the last three municipal, but in FY24, you'll go flying past it.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah, no, and there definitely should be a party that day.
Are you offering to volunteer?
I think the state should throw it for us.
Are you offering to volunteer host?
Maybe I will.
We can start a committee.
Alex, this town meeting, well-attended last night.
I'd say, what, 140, 145 folks?
Yeah, not, it wasn't particularly well-attended, but, but the negative, Nancy's were in very little attendance. Very, you know, the people are usually back there shouting and screaming, so.
Yeah, oh, good.
Yeah.
Good, all right, well, that's an indicator, maybe that things are more stable and acceptable than people had in the past, so that's good.
Yeah, that's what Phil told me. What'd you say, Alex?
The rain did not hurt.
Oh, right.
It always rains for town meetings, it seems to me.
I was gonna go, but it took me two hours to drive back from Boston.
Oh, God.
Oh.
The traffic was unbelievable.
All right, let's move on to what the collection development policy.
So I didn't get as far along on actually bringing forth a policy for approval, but I did send out everybody the request for reconsideration form that we do have on file that we most likely will continue to use, I've compared it to other libraries, and it's basically very similar. Ideally, we want to have an updated collection development policy to attach it to, but I did find a hard copy of our collection development policy from 1998, But I did find a, a hard copy of our collection development policy from nineteen ninety eight, which is about twenty pages long. I, we don't have a digital version, so I didn't think we had it anymore, but I, as I was cleaning up, I found a hard copy. But that's way longer than we needed to be, so I think Erin, just, you know, talking to other directors and, and looking at ALA, and, you know, it'll be very easy to patch something together that will work, um, for current, for the current environment.
Alright, so there's, we don't, so there, you don't have that to approve today anyway.
No, no, that just wasn't.
It's, that's, that will continue as a work in progress.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, along with other policies.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got them all divided up into current policies, and then policies, I'm pointing to my desk where I've got them, and then policies that need review and approval, so Erin can get started on those.
Okay, alright, an update on the Lois Smith fund.
Yes, so I hadn't heard back from Megan, and, um, I did shoot her off an email this morning, which I think I can read. It says, hi Jean, apologies on the delay on this, I only work part-time, so I'm just finalizing. I realized that I didn't mention that there is a two hundred and fifty dollar closing fee, the paperwork to close the fund is all set to be submitted, and I am planning on submitting this for closure today. The balance of the fund less two hundred and fifty dollar closing fee will be mailed via check to the Friends of the Newbury Town Library at the Newbury Town Library address. You should expect to receive a check in seven to ten business days. Please let me know if you have any questions, and happy retirement.
So, do you know, do the friends know this is coming to them formally yet?
I don't think they do, actually, because I didn't attend their last meeting, but I don't, I don't think that will be a problem, and then from there, you know, if you wanna look into depositing it with the town, you can do that, it's, you know, it'll be up, up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Friends meeting?
Yeah, I mean, the, the friends could just, you know, transfer it to the town, and they can, they can establish a, a separate account, cuz it is restricted fund. So that that would be, it would be good to have, though, and clearly designated as a separate fund, and not roll it into the, uh, gift and donations.
And we have the terminology that the fund was set up with.
Okay.
Let's see. The account created with the, will satisfy the original purpose to supplement and enhance technology programs and services offered by the Newbury Town Library to benefit the community. The goal of the endowed, the goal of the fund is to enrich, not replace, traditional tax-based support for the library through gifts, grants, and bequests from individuals and organizations. We might take out that last part, but it will definitely, will definitely leave in the enrich, not replace, traditional tax-based support.
Right. That was definitely the intent. Good.
Yep.
Good. No, all pieces are starting to fall into place. Like that.
Yeah, I just, I managed to check a couple of boxes. That includes the next one.
Okay.
Um, so I sent you all the results, that the accumulated results of the facilitator that facilitated the SOAR meeting, um, with everybody's comments, and then the, um, three files with the survey data um, of the town survey, which a hundred and twenty-five people responded to, which I thought was pretty respectable for these days.
Yep.
And, um, so that's all there, and ready to be done, whatever needs to be done with it. I, I can't remember, I think I put this to you in writing, Erin, but and I think unless you're going to definitely planning to apply for LSTA funds, I don't think there is a deadline for this year, so you can take your time with it. If you did wanna do that, you would have to, um, get it done by October first, maybe, I can't remember the exact date. But seeing as there's plenty of other things you're gonna be busy with.
Yeah.
I doubt applying for LSTA grants this year is gonna be one of them, so. You know, you don't wanna put it off forever, obviously, but the grunt work is done, and then you can take it from there. And, um, who, oh, Alex told me that Alicia Greco was looking for feedback, or, you know, so you keep her in the, in the loop as well.
Spoke with Alicia last night at the, uh, town meeting before it began, and told her we'd had, uh, received the preliminary results, and, uh, she's almost anxious to see them, so.
Good, good, okay.
Good, good.
Or not, depending.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think you share that with her, and, and, and indicate clearly that it's, it's an ongoing process, uh, later in the year. Alright. Is that it? Is that all there is?
Well, there is another, and Erin might have some others too. But just a very quick update on Amazon, um.
Oh, right, right.
I took my card off it, and I alerted Eileen, um, at town hall to that and Lillian, and so they are working, and I, and I, I had, um, queried some of our uh, MBLC directors as to what they did with credit cards and Prime and all of that, and I forwarded the information that I got mostly from the director in Andover. Barbara McNamara, and she, she really laid out what their experience was trying to have a library account without a credit card, so. We, we did hear from Lily, and I think you were on that too yesterday, Erin, she is, she's assistant accountant. She's trying to get a handle on all the things, it's kind of, the kind of thing where you don't get Prime, you get free shipping if you, um, purchase more than twenty-five dollars, so. At a time, so Barbara had this whole process where she makes sure she doesn't order unless she's got over the amount, and then the invoicing gets a little crazy because of how long it takes for towns to pay invoices. They have managed to do it, and so I sent all that advice on to Eileen and Lillian, and so hopefully you will get somewhere with that.
Okay. Alright. Alright, anything else? Erin, do you have anything?
I'm very excited for our new assistant director, who is starting, uh, a week after this. He comes to us from Amesbury, she's got fantastic years of experience. She knows the consortium, she knows our systems already, um, could, I, I couldn't be happier with our candidate, so, um, that's exciting, and I think she's. Yeah, so that's, that's exciting, where we, we might not have, um, gotten the youth services librarian, we did, we did get one hired, and, uh, not just one, but a really phenomenal candidate, so. Great.
Alright, excellent, alright, that's a, that's a start.
It's a big start, yep.
Yes, yeah.
Maybe you all should pick a date for the next one, since Dick and I won't be there.
Right? Right?
All on you.
Well, do we wanna go back to, we could do ten AM if that works for people, we could do five thirty PM if that works for people.
I would like to have it set up so it doesn't, um, conflict with the genealogy club meeting.
Yeah.
For a year, I haven't been able.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and actually, if we could pick a date going forward, that is kind of a regular monthly thing, and then only change them as needed.
Very good idea.
Yes.
So, what's today? Twenty seventh.
The genealogy club, I think, is the second Wednesday.
It is, so we could look at the fourth Wednesday of the month, which would actually be great, because for the statistical reports, you really need a bit of time at the start of every month to put them all together and gather your information.
The reverse of that will be true, though, in terms of the budget. Cause you'll be dealing with numbers for the month before.
True. So maybe in the middle.
Maybe the third.
The third, the third Wednesday.
How about the eighteenth?
Works for me, at ten, or at five thirty.
Yeah, either is good for me, um, so it's, it's really up to you all, what you. I'm an early bird, so anytime you wanna do early meetings, I'm your person.
Then, and then you're gonna start thinking about, what are you gonna do in-person meetings too, so.
Yeah, right, right. Right, cuz that will be after July.
Yeah, July fifteenth, I think is the deadline.
Yeah.
Now, and the other thing, you know, think about the first meeting, you need to have a election of offices. You need a chair and, and a secretary. Everybody get out and start campaigning.
Is it fair, is it fair to give, to give Beth her, her position without her being here yet?
That's mean, girl.
Not only is it unfair, it's mean.
Having been the beneficiary of that kind of action, don't do that to her.
I know it.
Turn about being fair play, Dick.
Whoever's not in attendance.
The eighteenth makes sense.
Right, five thirty.
What time?
Is five thirty good, anytime is honestly, okay.
That's a Wednesday, it's a late day in the library, so that's, you're there anyway.
Exactly.
It's fine with me.
Okay with me.
I don't know how it's going to set with, it should be good with Dick. Terry?
Yeah, it's good with me.
Okay.
Okay. And then if, if there's any issue, once we send out, you know, communications on the date, I'm sure that, um, they'll let us know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do a, you know, um, reach out to Margaret to see, uh, you know, is she interested in being continuous secretary, and that's
Right.
So. And I, I'll put together, I have some, uh, documents kicking around on other, that trustee's handbook and some other things, and I'll pull together bylaws and stuff like that, and put that together for, uh, for Beth, so. Whatever I have, but I think it will be helpful for her going forward, open meeting law and that kind of stuff. Give that to her at some point.
Alright, so we'll confirm, uh, Wednesday, May eighteenth at five thirty PM? Okay.
Cool, yep.
And it will be via Zoom?
Does it have to be? I mean, unless somebody tests positive.
We don't need to make a decision on that until the eleventh.
Right.
Of May. So let's hope for, uh, in, for in-person.
Okay.
I mean, so much more effective, the dynamics. The recordings are always more interesting, so, entertaining, so.
Well, and, 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 well, even the reality is, you are, you are recording the meeting too, even if you do it in person. That is the requirement, uh, you know, well, I guess, yeah, so.
So I guess, uh, reserve the community room for that evening at that time.
Okay. You know what, let me just double check.
Please do, now that you have the software with which to do it.
Let's see.
Oh, Jean.
Yes.
We've made some progress on the, on the rug.
Yes. Absolutely.
Right, we are good on the eighteenth, it's clear.
Oh, that's great, that's great.
On the rug, I, I, I sent out the thank you note and everything.
Both, both sisters, Melinda Brown Everett, and, and her sister Dale Brown Farnold have responded, indicating that there are still, there are two other rugs, which the great-grandmother created. Uh, Farnold has those, one is, uh, uh, a portrait of Ipswich Center, which she said is unique, and the other has barnyard animals in it, which appear also in this rug we have. And Dale is also looking into, uh, genealogy to help pin it down. And the family has, um, Lucy Holt. And I'm losing the last name, isn't that pathetic, but anyway. They, they think they've got the grandmother who put it together identified, so, and they've got pictures of the, uh, of the old farmstead. I'm sorry?
Did they find those pictures? She had written, I talked to her on the phone, they didn't know where they were yet.
Oh, good.
Do you know if they found them?
I do not know. And I think it was Dale in a most recent letter said that the, the family farmstead was well in the intersection of Central Street and I ninety-five, right where Pearson Plaza is.
Pearson Plaza is now, okay, yes, I did see that.
And there are in the collection of the Museum of Old Newbury, there are photographs of that whole area, when it was swept clean in, uh, fifty-two, fifty-three, when the highway was cut through. So, one way or the other, progress.
Yeah. I guess I didn't realize that was Dale Farnold's family, okay.
You know them?
I, I know Dale, yeah. Uh, she was, she was my travel agent from, uh, AAA. So I saw her frequently, and, uh, she's actually now working part-time at Winfrey's. Yeah.
What?
So. To keep herself, to keep herself busy, uh, you know, two or three days a week, so. Now, she, uh, I just saw her just before, uh, he's the one I went in to get chocolate bunnies for grandchildren. Relaying her stories of how she had done, uh, she'd walked the, um, uh, the Camino of South Diego de Conestelo Spain, and, um, so. Uh, was scheduled to do it again this spring, but I think she's putting it off, uh, so. Interesting lady. I didn't, I guess I didn't know the connection.
Look at us did. You know.
Yeah.
These are the fun things, huh?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's, that's great.
Oh, very good, okay, well, it's, uh, I guess that's it, so, uh, thank you all, I appreciate, uh, you know. Yeah, I guess so.
My last meeting, yes, yes.
Dick, Dick will be back, he'll be a special guest at all of our meetings.
Oh, yeah, right.
Still hoping you'll work on those keys, Dick.
I think Alex and I identified a lot of them, so, you know, we put stickers on some of the files, but, you know, we'll work on that, I'll be around.
Your eyes, not mine.
Yeah, yeah.
Far better.
Yeah. Well, excellent, well, thank you all very much, and I will see you, uh, you know, going forward, so.
We thank you, stay healthy.
Oh, well, I am.
Keep us posted, huh?
Yeah, I will, see how my work is doing now. Alright. Meeting is adjourned, take care.